President King, members of council and members of the general public. It's my pleasure to be with you here this evening. I want to do just a couple of things with you in about the next 15 minutes, which is talk about the city that we now share. We'll talk about the metropolitan region, Columbus and Franklin County, and how that's also playing out here in Upper Arlington. And hopefully we'll have some time for some dialogue at the end. One of the things that I kind of want to frame this conversation is that our dilemma in contemporary society is that we hate change and we love it at the same time. What we really want is for things to remain the same, but get better. So as you look at the maps and the data I'm about to present, if ask yourself the simple question, is Columbus getting better for everybody? Is it getting better for most, for some? Are some parts of the region doing better than others? And why might that be? What we will not get into tonight is why is the housing market behaving in the way it is? Or why some neighborhoods are struggling while other places are thriving? At United Way, we fund 92 nonprofits across Franklin County, and all of them are dealing with these huge demographic and population shifts. And so we put this data together to help inform the nonprofit sector on how best to serve people. So if we look at where I grew up, this is the house that my mom and dad lived in for 46 years. It is in suburban Youngstown suburb called Boardman. It had about 350 houses and all 350 were homeowners and all 350 were white. I never really thought about the backstory of why my neighborhood looked the way it was. I just assumed it became that kind of neighborhood organically. I moved to Columbus to go to the Ohio State University and I got a job leasing apartments at Morse and Westerville Road. This is 1988. There were $295 a month two-bedroom townhouses. And of the many things I learned as a 21-year-old student working there, there were two things I was told. One, if I'm there by myself taking applications by a prospective resident, and that is a resident of color, I'm supposed to put a tick mark on the application. So the home office knows the race of the person who's applying for that home. I'm also told that if I'm assigning someone who's interested in living at the apartment complex, not to put a person of color near a vacant unit close to the rental office. This apartment complex was about 60% black, 40% white. It was in the Columbus School District. I didn't know what I was doing was breaking federal law. But I called to the HUD office in downtown Columbus, told them what I was being instructed to do. And they told me if I would be willing to keep a log, they could make a case against the property management company for racial steering. And I did that and it changed my entire career trajectory. Where I live now is a neighborhood in the university district. I actually live on the same street I had my first apartment on in 1988. I live on the right side, rent the other side out. So it's a multifamily unit. By definition, I am a gentrifier in my neighborhood. There are unintended consequences of where I live today. If you define who I am based on my income, my level of education, but it's not how I behave in my neighborhood. I share this quick story because it's an important context that all of us got here tonight in 2022 with a huge complicated history behind us that what shapes American cities. What we just went through in Columbus was some pretty dramatic change. In fact, in the last 11 years, we've added a quarter of a million people in the Columbus Metropolitan Statistical Area. The rest of Ohio outside of Columbus has now lost 5,500 people. We are the economic engine of the entire state. And once you get about 25 miles from Broad and High, it's a very different Ohio. If you look at the growth of the region, how many people move into the Columbus metro on an annual basis? That growth has only been slowly picking up pace. But something dramatically happened this past decade. If you look at that second column from the right, you can see that between 2000 and 2010, just 43% of metro growth occurred in Franklin County. Between 2010 and 2020, the growth of the region inched up a little bit, but it flowed into Franklin County dramatically. As 70% of the growth of the 10-county metro happened just in Franklin County. So for those of us that live and work and spend most of our time in Franklin County, it feels like the city is growing more rapidly. It's just because more of that growth is coming inward. So now you look at the city of Columbus, 906,000 people. We just went through the highest increase in growth since the 1950s. The pace of growth is the fastest in 70 years for Columbus. And based in a numeric way, it was the largest increase in population in Columbus history ever recorded in a decennial census. When you compare Columbus to perennial winners in the growth race, Columbus is actually growing faster than Houston, Nashville, Dallas, and Phoenix. All of these places we think of the high-growth winners. But if you look and if you start at the bottom of this page and you look at what happened in the United States, growth in America dramatically slowed from just under 10% to 7.4. Growth slowed in America by about 28 percentage points. It was the slowest growth since the Great Depression. Go to the top of the page and you see that growth in Columbus increased by 50%. Growth in Franklin County also increased as it was slowing across the rest of the US. If you look at the metropolitan region, every single place in central Ohio is growing. In that orange color are those communities that are growing, not as fast as the nearly 14% of Franklin County. So you see Upper Arlington at 9%, Bexley, even Whitehall is growing. And Whitehall posted its first growth in 50 years. And in blue are the high-growth places, those growing faster than the Franklin County average. And this is the most evenly distributed we've seen growth in a long time. With high-growth suburbs on the south end, Grove City and Canal Winchester and Pickerington, the perennial high-growth places on the very north end of the outer belt, and even places like Grandview Heights because of the redevelopment at Grandview Yard. To put this in perspective, there will be 44 more people living in this community at the end of the day than when the day started. And on an annual basis, that's 16,000 people every 12 months. We need to build an entire Worthington or an entire Bexley every year to meet this growth. The challenge has been we've only been building new housing to accommodate 8,000 people every year in this county. And that's what's causing our rents and home prices to escalate so rapidly in addition to a global pandemic and other forces like land, lumber, and labor running very high. So now let's zoom out to the whole county. What you see here is that Franklin County posted 160,000 additional people, 14% growth. There's just two places on this map where there's multiple census tracts losing people from coast side, all the way out to Hollywood Casino, running along Broad and Sullivan Avenue. All of those neighborhoods are losing housing units and households as the west side continues to struggle, even in good economic times. The other one that I was surprised at first were all the neighborhoods running south of Nationwide Children's Hospital. That area is not losing people because the neighborhood is struggling. That neighborhood is losing people because renter families with school-aged children are being displaced by new home purchasers, which are often a single person or a two-high-income-earning household as homes on the near south side are doubling and tripling and quadrupling. All of the growth in the city of Columbus in the last 10 years was due to increases in diversity. Despite the fact it was the largest numeric increase ever recorded in Columbus history, it was also the first decade the white population of the city of Columbus actually fell in real numbers. This is also a true statement for Franklin County. The second largest increase in growth, Franklin County added 160,000 people. It added 163,000 non-white and lost 3,000 white residents. Here's the chart. I won't read it because you can scan it for yourself. Some of this major shift in diversity is also because people don't like these labels. And what has happened is people now recognize more deeply that their personal family history may be more unique than what they had previously filled out the form. And people no longer think the label white alone or black alone defines their family history. So we've seen some shifts where people are now selecting two or more or some other race because they think that more accurately reflects their family history. But what you can see here is that while the white population slipped only a little bit, that little slip is significant based on how much growth we had in our region. That was really driven by Asian, other two or more, and the growth of the Hispanic population. And I'm going to give you some context for that here in a few minutes. Everywhere in Franklin County got more diverse. Everywhere in green and that pale yellow shows places that increased in their diversity index in the last 10 years where Franklin County went from a 50 out of 100 to a 60 out of 100. There are just three places where diversity fell, north of OSU, attracting Whitehall and out by Hollywood Casino. That was either because new housing was built or some housing was demolished and it changed the micro demographics of that tract. What that index does, as you can see here, developed by USA Today and Gallup, and it shows a scale of how likely two people from any area would be a different race or ethnicity. If you look at this map in red, that shows all of the places that are really homogeneous. And as you get deeper into the green, those are the communities that are more diverse. If you will, we can ignore that portion of the bottom left of this screen, which is a very rural area that is south of Grove City. It is mostly farms, very few people live there, and we might not expect that to be very diverse. If you exclude that, the six most homogeneous places in Franklin County are Bexley, German Village, Grandview, Arlington, Clintonville, and Worthington. It's interesting to acknowledge that homogeneous communities can be both in the city of Columbus and they can be in suburban communities. But of the six that I just mentioned, five of the six were built during an era of redlining and when segregation policies were being used all across the United States. And here in Franklin County, we were no different. But if you look on this map at communities like Dublin and New Albany, they are very diverse through the lens of race, ethnicity, and culture. In fact, New Albany High School now has an official NAACP chapter as 10% of the enrollment at New Albany High School identifies as black. New Albany and Dublin have been built very recently and they represent a very different kind of suburban typology. So if we look at the movement of diversity by race across the community, what you see in this map in green are all of the places where the black population is rising. In red is where the black population is falling. Oversimplifying this map, there has been an exodus of black households out of the pre-1950 boundary of Columbus as the black middle class really began to suburbanize just after 2000. That suburbanization really picked up after 2010. And as black home buyers and other renters were moving up the economic mobility ladder, places like Westerville, Gehanna, New Albany, Reynoldsburg, and Pickerington were really the destination for that movement up and out, which was really following a lot of the up and out movement of white populations between the 1960s and the late 1970s. The largest decrease in the black population was Franklinton. What you see here is the beginning of the decade was a CMHA property called Riverside Bradley. At the end of the decade, it was studios ones and twos by Casto, and the black population in Franklinton fell by 61%. This is where the black population has been moving in large numbers. Three census tracts in far northeast Columbus that are immediately adjacent to New Albany. This is Google Satellite of something called Upper Albany West. It is in the city of Columbus, but this is the largest growth in the black population. These three census tracts, 72.1409 and 15, they're all connected to each other and they really do this kind of crescent moon around the city of New Albany. If we look at what's happening with the white population, there are three specific areas that have seen a considerable drop in the white population. That is Northland, the Eastland to the Franklin County edge, all the way out towards Pickerington and Reynoldsburg, and then the area of Franklinton out toward Hollywood Casino. While the white population barely dropped because of the changes we experienced, we began last decade as a county that was 69% white. We ended the decade just above 60% white. If this decade continues to have the same racial change as what we just went through, there may not be a racial majority in Franklin County at the end of the decade. Which means if we do not have strong DE and I platforms where we work, where we live, where we worship, it's really not about where we're going as a region, we're already there, right? And this is why it's becoming very important to have strong DE and I culture within the nonprofit sector and in the business sector. Largest decreases in the white population, places in Whitehall, Eastland, and Northland where that white population fell dramatically in just a 10-year period. Where's the white population going? The number one growth for the white households is Mount Vernon Avenue and East Long Street, where the King Arts Complex and the Urban League is located as there is really a racial musical chairs that's going on. What's important here is that as black households are leaving the Near East Side, they are often households with school-aged children or they are seniors. The influx of new residents tend to be in the 24 to 44 age bracket. They are white and they do not have children. Which means the neighborhood is becoming much more diverse, the schools are not. The Asian population, of course, is a huge jump at 65% from about 45,000 to 75,000 in Franklin County. In red is where the Asian population does not live. In the green is where the Asian population does live. We now have the largest Asian population in the state. It is the most diverse, it is growing at the fastest rate. And we now have Asian communities near Ohio State that are culturally different than the Asian communities in Dublin, very different than the Asian community in Northland, which in less than a decade, about 7,000 Apollibutinese and other groups have moved into Northland, New Albany, and Reynoldsburg also have significant Asian populations at this point, which were not present just a decade, certainly 20 years ago. When it comes to the Hispanic population, this is a map that shows growth. Everywhere in green is where the Hispanic population is increasing. What we see with many cultural communities is people will move into communities where they see like-minded people. After they've been in a community for a number of years, they may become more adventurous in where they choose to live. We're seeing that in Columbus with many of our new American communities. So as we look at where is the most diverse place in the entire region? It is the area of West Broad Street at 270 behind the Home Depot. If you know that part of Columbus, what you see shaded on the back of this screen is indicative of that kind of housing typology. What we're seeing in Columbus, those areas built in the 1960s and the 1970s, they are neither new enough to be competitive in the housing market. They've not been upgraded and they're not old enough to be interesting for the gentrification movement. But they have become a very attractive place for many new American families because the housing stock is good quality and continues to be reasonably priced. Upper Arlington, the area behind Whole Foods, came out as the least diverse place in all of the metropolitan region. Obviously, Upper Arlington, like places in Grandview and Worthington and Clintonville, were built during the era of redlining where those impacts on racial steering and the race of buyers and purchasers were very much set in stone. And it is interesting that some parts of UA still manifest that kind of history. That being said, even this area of Upper Arlington is getting more diverse. As you can see, the percentage of white residents is dropping, although slowly. So once we move now into Upper Arlington, you can see here the change over the last 10 years through the lens of race and ethnicity. And it's really kind of mirroring what we're seeing across Franklin County. There's growth in Upper Arlington, it's modest growth. The white population slipped only a little bit and you're seeing considerable growth in that category of two or more. A lot of this is simply how people now identify their own history. But it is also an indication that Arlington, like the rest of the metropolitan region, is experiencing change. That growth across the 10-county region started to come inward. It came inward because the diversity and typology of the housing stock in Franklin County is so much more robust than what you find in Union or Delaware looking in Fairfield Counties. That's why, in my opinion, that growth was coming inward. And while we see significant increases, say, in the black population, up 36%, because the number is so small, it represented just 100 people. Same is true for Hispanic, where we're looking at a nearly 60% growth that really only represented about 330 people. When we compare the trends in Franklin County on the right with the change in racial demographics with Upper Arlington, we can see there's a little bit of a mirroring effect, right? White population slipping a little bit, the black population going up, Asian population on the increase, other two or more and Hispanic. But because the raw numbers for Upper Arlington are so low, this chart is a little misleading. But what it does say is the trend line is similar. Now, when we look at just what is the racial composition of Upper Arlington compared to Franklin County is where you start to reveal some significant differences. Where Upper Arlington's white population is considerably higher, the black population's considerably lower. Asian is comparable. Other is more diverse in Franklin County. Two or more is comparable between UA and the rest of the county. And the Hispanic population throughout the county is more robust than what we see here in UA. Going back to that diversity index, it was pretty significant when I did the research that Steve had asked me to do, that Arlington is tracking with Franklin County. In the beginning, I said the diversity index for Franklin County moved from a 50 to a 60, up 10 points. And the increase in the diversity index was pretty similar in every single census tract in Upper Arlington. So it's not as if there's this one part of Arlington that's changing and the other parts are not. It's all changing, just not in the same patterns as the rest of the county. And while the diversity index for the county is at a 60, you can see that the most diverse place in all of Upper Arlington comes in at 35. So one of the other things we wanted to look at is how does Upper Arlington compare to the other high-income communities in Franklin County? So this is a scan that looks at Dublin, New Albany, Bexley, Grandview, and UA compared to Franklin County. I organized those suburbs, not alphabetically, but by the percent of diversity. With Dublin being the most diverse of what I would call the wealthy five, right? Dublin City Schools, as of this current academic year, is just 59% white, 41% non-white. That's also the heart that Dublin City Schools covers a larger geography than the city of Dublin. There are some differences, right? The black population in Bexley is higher and it is also higher in New Albany. This makes sense because as people move up that economic mobility ladder, OSU researchers have tracked people who've sold a home and bought another home in Franklin County. And the railroad track that runs along Interstate 71 has really kind of been a race demarcation line for 100 years. So as households of color move up to buy more expensive home, they tend to go northeast and east in the direction they are already headed away from downtown Columbus. One of the interesting things is how comparable the home values are for all of these communities, right? There was no real variation between suburban communities of wealth that are more diverse than those that are more homogeneous and the prices that those communities can command. So I wanted to just walk through and I'll leave this slide up for just a second. I know there's lots of numbers on here. I just wanted to bring this more to a kind of a common understanding that while Upper Arlington does look very different than other parts of Franklin County, it is impossible for any particular community to really be an island of itself. When we look at communities like Northland, they added just 484 housing units in the last decade, but they added 13,700 more people. Sometimes growth and change is visible when you see smaller buildings coming down to make way for larger ones. And sometimes communities can change dramatically racially, like the Near East Side between downtown and Bexley or a community like 161 and Morse Road can become incredibly vibrant. But you don't always have visuals that help you understand that. So I want to thank you for, oh, these are the highlights from the deep dive that I've been doing on the census. I've not touched on all of these points in the slides tonight, but I do want to give the kind of summary. Regional growth has been consistent with previous decades, but that regional growth is shifting inward into Franklin County. Neighborhoods that have been losing people are now growing, whether or not you can tell it with the visual or not. Huge increases in diversity, particularly in the suburban portions of the city of Columbus. But specifically, it's those Westerville, Gehanna, New Albany, Pickerington, and Reynoldsburg. Reynoldsburg no longer has a racial majority. It is split almost a third, a third, and a third. Huge increase of white people moving into urban Columbus, but not bringing children with them. All of our growth of Columbus and Franklin County is due to increases in diversity and has been now well documented. We have been underbuilding to support the growth of our region every year for a decade. Franklin County by 2020 had a lower housing vacancy rate than San Francisco County by April of 2020. About 10,000 vacant homes across Franklin County disappeared in the last 10 years, which means we're starting this decade, which I believe will be a decade of accelerated growth with what's happening at OSU, Nationwide Children's, Intel, and other recent announcements. We're starting off this decade with less housing being built this year than 2021, which was less housing than 2020, 2020 being the most housing construction in 15 years. And it still fell short by thousands of units. We are a rapidly changing region and I think that that growth is probably going to accelerate. I don't know if there's time for a question or if you had.
Yeah, we'll have questions for sure. Yeah. I'm sure there are plenty of council questions. Somebody dive in. We'll start on the left, Ms. Adams.
Thank you. This was very informative. I had the pleasure of seeing you present at the Columbus Metropolitan Club this year as well, some of this information. So I don't know about future predictions. Do you have thoughts on how are these trends going to continue and what things would have a significant impact on changing those trends?
So the Middle High Regional Planning Commission are really the experts in that space and they are at the moment updating their plans to look at future growth. They continue to say over the next 30 years, a million people will be coming to central Ohio. What those people will look like, the housing needs and the housing preferences, though, are dramatically changing, right? One of the things I think about is the nuclear family with a two-parent household with school-aged children is not the growth trajectory of the future. We have a lot more people living as a single housing unit, people living in kind of cohabitation. And so what we really need, in my opinion, in a metropolitan region are smaller housing units, more dense housing units, more walkable units, things that really kind of reflect the demographics of where Franklin County is going. And I know that Morpsy will soon be out with updated projections. One of the things that's driving our growth is there's three reasons that can drive a city's growth. One is natural increase, births minus deaths. The other is the influx of international people moving to your city and the other is domestic migration. We are a high-growth region in a no-growth state in a slow-growth part of the country because we are growing in all three of those spaces. Our median age here is seven years younger than Cleveland, which means we have a lot more people in childbearing years. Half of our growth is due to babies minus deaths. So no matter what happens in the economy, this region's going to continue to grow because of that. 26% of our growth are people moving here from somewhere else around the world. And the smallest part of our growth at 24% are American-born people moving to Columbus from another city in the United States. And most of that is coming from Dayton, Cleveland, Akron, Detroit, and Youngstown. And when you tend to leave Columbus, you leave Ohio and you leave the Midwest. And these things are fickle. And then you get global pandemics and growth moves outward. And it hasn't been enough time to see if the growth preferences are going to begin to move back inward. Most demographers think it will.
So that's the housing and the growth overall. What about the racial demographics?
I mean, just based on, you know, there's also swings with regard to national immigration and those things. One of Columbus's defining characteristics, we are not a first-choice destination for many new Americans. Many new Americans get settled in larger cities that are more expensive. They are more difficult to navigate. That trend of finding a second destination really began in the 1990s. And Columbus began to have a very strong organic sense of pull among new American communities. Housing is relatively cheap. We're still running a third lower than the US average in housing costs despite these huge increases. The labor market is strong and people felt that they were welcome and included here. And that's what new Americans want to hear. And that's why Columbus started to become a magnet destination, not because there was some recruitment strategy to make Columbus appealing to new Americans. I think at one point, I remember a statistic that we are 11% of the state's population, but 41% of all new Americans come to Ohio, pick this county, for all the reasons.
Yeah, and I recall it came out in the questions in your Columbus Metropolitan Club conversation of what are some things a community can do to be more welcoming?
Well, I would say that begins at an organic conversation with the people that you are with, right? So when I look at Morse Road in particular, a lot of people felt that the Morse Road corridor was going to really struggle when Lazarus, Sears, and J.C. Penney closed and relocated to Polaris. If you look at the retail vacancy along Morse Road from 71 all the way to Easton, it is almost nonexistent. A local geographer pulled every business permit the city of Columbus issued along Morse Road in the eight years after the mall closed. And of the majority of And of the majority of one hundred and eighty businesses were started by neither African or Latino surname. Morse Road is far more entrepreneurial. It's far more local than the Short North is now, for sure. Maybe even was twenty-five years ago. Part of it is those businesses are creating an entrepreneurial spirit, and they're welcoming other people to the neighborhood, right? You don't want me to, I mean, you do want me to welcome people to the neighborhood, but it is more authentic when people can build those relationships, when people can find places to worship, neighborhoods to live in, cultural competency in their government, how to ride the bus, how to interact with police. Those are things that we as civil servants and the nonprofit sector can do so people who recently moved to Columbus can have an experience that warms their heart.
I want to ask, I don't know if you have any information. Ohio State is very close to Upper Arlington. Do you have information? We know that a lot of people work at Ohio State that reside in Upper Arlington. What is the impact?
Well, I don't know that answer, but you probably know better than me. But Ohio State's been there for a long time, right? It is changing, and student enrollment has been changing. But the changes we're seeing in Columbus are not due to the Ohio State University. They're due to multiple factors, the kinds of businesses that are here. And certainly, the Ohio State University has an impact on that. It's probably more significant here in Upper Arlington, but I don't have that data.
Thank you.
Thank you, President King. Thank you, Mr. Wilkos, for the work that you've done. It's very illuminating. I was wondering if you also have any information about trends in per capita income on a tracked-by-tracked basis in Franklin County, what you're seeing there?
It is available. I can tell you that. I'll, I'll answer the question with a slightly revised way of looking at it because it's something that I do have off the top of my head, and that is looking at neighborhoods that are experiencing gentrification, neighborhoods that are experiencing displacement, and neighborhoods that are really aren't experiencing much change. In about a seventeen-year period, starting around two thousand, what we saw across Franklin County was only four percent of Franklin County was experiencing gentrification, meaning high-net-wealth people moving into a lower-income neighborhood, having negative consequences on longtime residents, either rising prices, rising taxes, and pushing those folks out. Unfortunately, what we saw across Franklin County was about forty-three percent of census tracts got slightly poorer. And for about fifty-three percent of the county, those areas were either wealthy in two thousand. They're still wealthy now, places like Arlington and Clintonville and German Village, or they were low-income twenty years ago, like Linden and the Hilltop, and there's been very little change. There is not as much change around income as what many people think. I believe that people are interpreting rent costs and home prices to interpret incomes. Incomes are not increasing anywhere near where those housing costs are going up. So going back to a place like Northland, rents and home prices in Northland are jumping rapidly as parts of that area continue to get weaker economically. It is not a gentrifying part of Franklin County, but you have more and more low- and moderate-income people competing against each other for a fixed supply of housing. And so the housing costs are jumping there. That's a different experience of the Near East Side where you have, you know, when a neighborhood starts to lose its school-aged children and lose its seniors and only start absorbing income earners, that tells you a neighborhood is gentrifying. That's not Columbus's problem. Columbus's problem, in my opinion, for the entire region is displacement because that's happening almost everywhere, meaning housing costs are rising faster than people's incomes. That is an issue in Newark and Marysville and Northland, and I'm sure also true in Arlington.